This meeting will please come to order. The 16th meeting of the 23rd Council is now in order. At this time, Counselor Harris will not be here. He has been excused for this meeting this evening. At this time, we will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by the Chief Operating Officer, Lawrence Rial.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rial. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a dinner break tonight at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. And we want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under proclamations and presentations this evening, and there is no proclamations, but we have employee recognition awards, which will be led by Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Actually, I think we had, last time, we didn't have anyone, and this time, we have several. So bear with me, myself and Counselor Gibson will be reading them off this evening. So if we can have the award recipients, if you're in the audience, please come to the front. We have Gregory Mondragon, Angela Lucero, Erica Anaya, Jessica Benavides, Rebecca Stansifer, and Donna White. So as you guys are making it up here to the front of the podium, I'm going to start reading them off. First of all, we have Mr. Gregory Mondragon. His position is APD Transport Officer.
Would you please face the council? Thank you.[305.27][305.27](Laughter).
So, in this category is under Public Service, and he was actually nominated by a private citizen. Gregory is a member of the APD DOJ mandated Peer Support Program, which devotes time to the department employees in times of crisis or those seeking professional or personal help. He works with Real-Time Crime Center to assist field officers during calls and is able to converse with prisoners in a manner that allows de-escalation of situations before conflict arises. He is also an active participant in the department's sponsored charity work through Operation Hope. Thank you, Mr. Mondragon.[349.13][349.13](Applause). And after I read, myself and Counselor Gibson read them all, we actually, if you can come up and receive your award, and if you want to say a couple of words before you come up, you're more than welcome to. The next recipient is Angela Lucero. Her position is the Solid Waste Supervisor, and she was nominated under the category of Safety and Heroism. She was nominated by a private citizen as well. On the morning of May 17th, a citizen going eastbound on Coors Ramp to I-40 witnessed a solid waste management truck stopped in the left lane with emergency flashing lights. As she passed, she noticed that the truck was parked behind another non-city worker's car that was stopped to help prevent injury to the person fixing his vehicle. Angelo was also standing outside his truck to direct traffic and avoid additional backup, ensuring the safety of the other driver. With this being a high-volume area at one of the busiest times of the day, Angelo provided exceptional public service. The next person is Erica Anaya. Her position is Executive Assistant at Aviation, and she was nominated by her supervisor under the category of Human Relations. Erica always comes to work with an incredibly positive outlook and attitude. She cares about the overall wellness of all employees of the Aviation Department and is always looking out for their best interests. She strives to improve the internal relationships of our department, and even more impressive, between inner department and inner government agency. She eloquently handles the relationship between APD and Aviation, along with relationships of TSA and Aviation. Thank you, Erica.[467.11][467.11](Applause). Who's Erica? You're Erica?[470.11][470.11](Laughter). So I'm going to pass the remaining three nomination awards over to Counselor Gibson, so all these three.
All right. Next is Jessica Benavides. She's a Senior Affairs Meal Site Coordinator in Senior Affairs. She was nominated by her supervisor. And prior to Jessica's assignment to the Alameda Meal Site, it was lacking in variety in both creative programming and senior outings. During the six months that Jessica has been there, she has implemented new programming and trips amidst challenges from seniors, other staff, and lack of funds. She has eliminated meal waste significantly and welcomed several new seniors to the Alameda Site. She has made improvements to the bingo program and implemented theme months, where each month focuses on exploring the food and literature of a different culture. Jessica also helped to change the Alameda Meal Site hours of operation to better suit the needs of the seniors and has brought in different educational speakers on topics such as SNAP, Medicare, health services, and legal services.[555.29][555.29](Applause). And next, Rebecca Stansifer. Her position is Airfield Operations Officer. Let's see, she was nominated by a fellow employee. As a Better Health Ambassador, Ms. Stansifer provides the department with weekly emails on a variety of topics to promote health, safety, prevention, and improvement. Her emails are an example of her positive and upbeat attitude, which contribute to a healthier work environment. So thank you, Rebecca.[602.16][602.16](Applause). And this is the last one? Okay. And last but not least, Donna White. She is a Senior Accountant for the Department of Finance and Accounting Division. She was nominated by her supervisor as well. Since Donna started with the city in December of 2016, she has been improving the processes for all of the consolidated vendor billings. For the Xerox leases, it had been extremely difficult to identify if the city was being charged the correct monthly lease amount or being charged for machines that were no longer in service. She worked with Xerox and City Purchasing to get appropriate backup and did a physical inventory of all machines in the city. As a result of this painful process, monthly expenditures dropped by approximately $8,000, which resulted in annual savings of about $96,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gibson. So if you'd like to say a few words before you come up, any one of you?[677.22][677.22](Laughter). Well, if not, you're more than welcome to come up and receive your awards, but we really want to thank you for your service and going above and beyond your job duties. So thank you, we appreciate you.[690.22][690.22](Applause).
Thanks for your contribution. Thanks for your work, appreciate it. Thanks for your work, appreciate it. For example, for your work.
Thank you. So, thank you. Appreciate it. And, hi, how are you?
Hi, thank you for your work, appreciate it, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Donna?
Great job, thank you for your work.
And Erica? Thank you. And Rebecca? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penya and Counselor Gibson.[744.13][744.13](Applause). There is no economic development discussion this evening. We will move to Item 5, that is the Administrative Question and Answer Period. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Director Bernie Toon from ABQ Ride. And while Director Toon is coming down, I'll just clarify that we did get a response to a request that we had made a while back to the administration, asking about the wrapping, the advertising wrap that's on our city buses. I get a lot of negative feedback on that wrap. People feel like they can't see inside the bus. It kind of makes everything look cheap, and in fact, it turns out, it is cheap. The city's making $110,000 a year to make those buses look ugly. And I really object to it, and I'm sorry that we come to this, because I had asked for it prior to this, and I thought maybe we could get ahead of it somehow. I'll just say this, and then I'll allow you to speak, Mr. Director. When this was first done, it was done, if I'm not mistaken, under Mayor Chavez. And if I'm not mistaken, he came to the council and asked if this was something that we would think was a good idea. And as a supporter of transit, I think back then, I said, "Yeah, sure, if you guys think it's great, then, or it helps the transit service in significant way, then I'm all for it." But then, at the same time, really seeing it in place, it seems like money poorly spent. And I just want to get it out there, because it bugs me, and it would really bug me to see it on ART when it gets started, to have, you know, a brand-new system, have that same kind of stuff. My understanding is that would get us another $19,000 a year to put them on the ART bus. So Director Toon, happy to hear your perspective on it.
Director Toon?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President, Counselors, and Counselor Benton. It has been the practice of the Keller administration to reverse a previous decision by Mayor Berry, to not put wraps on certain buses. I think the bottom-line thought was that as revenues get more and more difficult to collect, as it grows harder to raise fares, because we don't like to raise fares because of the elderly and other folks who depend on the transit system to get around and get to where they have to go, that we're just trying to sort of be creative and draw additional revenues into the department wherever we can, in addition to the farebox revenue that comes to us, so that we can continue to draw funds in to make our state matches and be eligible for those federal dollars that we can leverage very economically. There are strong views on wraps in both camps. I certainly appreciate your views and the views of your constituents. And I think we don't always have control over the attractiveness of a wrap in terms of what it's advertising, but that is our current policy. But should the council see fit to engage us in a dialogue to see if we could perhaps find a different way to either go about the wrapping or to look at other sources of revenue, I suppose we would be open to that. I'd yield to Lawrence Rial for any comment he might have.
Mr. Rial.
Mr. President and Counselor Benton, I think that, as Bernie described, Mr. Toon described, and members of the council, is obviously the wraps have always been an opportunity for us to make additional revenue. And quite frankly, they're really rolling billboards, as you see them on the street. I know some of the concerns have been with the wraps around the windows. A lot of folks nervous that the windows are not, you know, you can't see as they're driving on the street and who's in the buses, et cetera, and there's that issue. So I think there's probably some room for us to work with you all to try and look at how we might make those wraps perhaps more attractive, and look at how we work that program. Obviously, it's a revenue opportunity for us. At this point, the art buses are what they are and what was originally conceived by the city at the time they were purchased. Obviously, we can look at the whole program and be happy to get all of your perspective on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rial and Director Toon. And, you know, sorry for sounding snarky, but it's kind of something that's nagged at me for a while. Some of the feedback I got was actually also included that having an announcement on the back of the bus is somehow more palatable. I mean, there's no window back there, because it's equipment, and that you've really got a captive audience when you're stopped behind a bus at a stop sign. Whereas, you know, that side of the bus, and especially, as you say, the windows, I just really like us to take a look at that. And then also, perhaps, if you could, let us know, if other councils are interested, fine, but I'll pass it along to them if you answer to me. But have we increased that revenue over the years? Have we, how does that compare to a billboard? Because you're right, it gives pretty good exposure for a long part of the day to the advertiser who's paying for it. So I think that's it. You know, probably wouldn't have had to have had this conversation as a Q and A, but I just found out that, you know, the decision was reversed, and I do remain concerned about on the new buses that are coming in, that perhaps we could treat those differently.
And, Mr. President, and Counselor Benton, and members of the council, the decision that was reversed really applied to only one of the buses that we had ordered. They're called the 400s. Those are the green line, light line green buses that you see out there, that actually, if you look at them closely, they resemble city blocks, is what, and the routes. The previous administration had basically put a moratorium on any wrappings around those particular buses. So let us look at the revenue piece and get a little bit of a sense of what we've generated in the last year compared to other years, and then have a conversation about how we might make those look a little better. And, I mean, our goal here is to use this opportunity to help augment the revenues that we use for, to run the operations of the Transit Department.
Mr. President, I just want to say, I mean, I think we have, for a city our size, we have an excellent transit system. I mean, it takes a lot of knocks, and of course, with the ART, there's a lot of differences of opinion in general, but about bus service as a whole, for the city, for a city of our size, we've got pretty darn good service. And I know that we're being strategic about how to reallocate our resources to some extent and try to get the best bang for the buck with the system we have. So we appreciate the leadership of yourself and Director Toon on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Benton, Director Toon. Do we have any other questions for the administration? Counselor Borrego?
At the last council meeting, I requested information about how many police officers we have on the street, and I still have not received that. And I don't see any of our fine police officers, well, there's one police officer, but I don't see our chief or anyone else. I believe that Sarita Mayer said that she would get that information to me. Also, I was interested in knowing what changes have been made to the training and the recruitment, and I still am waiting on that information. So I don't know if you can answer that, or if you'd like to forward that to me.
Mr. President?
Mr. President and Counselor, let me make sure that, again, I apologize for not getting that to you in a timely manner. We will get that information to you post-haste and have a conversation with you about the training. And obviously, that information will be made available to any of you, as you all may request that. But again, my apologies, and we'll get back with you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also would like to make a comment about, on a different matter. I just wanted to thank the administration and the special events people and our police, our fire, for a successful West Side Summer Fest. It went, I think, without incident, and there were, oh my God, there were so many people there. I left at about 8:00, and there were still people coming and just flowing in. The traffic seemed to be circulating pretty well. It seemed to be a really enjoyable event, and I really appreciate that it was in my district.
Mr. President, if I might just say, first to you, Counselor Borrego, and to all the city council, we obviously have some great staff and some folks that really work well together, and it's not oftentimes you get an opportunity to say thank you to all of them when they actually work. Every department that is responsible, in particular with Cultural Services being the lead, but every department from Fire and Police to DMB and others that help with this process, makes all of those activities across the city safe for our citizens, and we thank you for that recognition, and just want to say publicly that we've got some great people working on those. And obviously, it brings a great opportunity for people to enjoy the city in a different way, so we thank you for that recognition.
Well, and the nice thing was that it was really a family event. There were lots of children there, there were families enjoying each other and neighbors, and it was really what it was intended to be, is a family fun entertainment venue. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the administration? Seeing none, let's move on to the Journal. I'd like to move approval of the August 6th Journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Gibson. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now on communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing OC-10 on tonight's agenda for final action. OC-10 is certification of petitions for charter amendments, and this will require two-thirds votes. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing EC-217 and placing it on the September 5th council agenda for final action. EC-217 is Honeywell International, Inc., Double Eagle II hangar lease and agreement. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing EC-218 and placing it on the September 5th council agenda for final action. EC-218 is Scheduled Airline Operations Agreement and Terminal Building Lease with Alaska Airlines, and this will also require two-thirds votes. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. And we have one more, and this is being sponsored by myself, Counselor Davis, Counselor Jones, and Counselor Penya. And I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing O-27 and referring it to the Finance and Government Operations Committee. O-27 is Adopting Small Wireless Facility Regulations to authorize and regulate certain small wireless facility installations within city right-of-ways or on city-owned utility poles. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. I'd like to move the letter of introduction.
So move.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now under Item 8, that is Reports of Committees, and this is Counselor Penya. Counselor Gibson?
Thank you. Excuse me for interrupting you, Mr. President, but I just want to make a note here, and this seems like the best place to do it, before we go any farther, that there was a misprint, misinformation went out through the newspaper, that there would be tiny home legislation on the agenda for tonight, and that was an error, so that's not happening. I'm just telling this to anybody who came to speak on the tiny homes, it's not something that's on the agenda, will be discussed tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that clarification, and if you are signed up to speak on the Tiny Homes Project under general public comment, you still have that opportunity. Let's go back to Reports of Committees. Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, August 13, 2018, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC-162, that it be withdrawn by the administration. In the matter of EC-163, 164, and 165, that they be approved. In the matter of O-25, 26, and R-57 and 58, that they do pass and be acted on at the meeting in which they are reported. In the matter of R-47, 48, 49, 50, and 55, that they do pass. I make a motion to accept the committee's report.
Do we have a motion and a second?
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Gibson to accept the committee report. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. Counselor Borrego?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, August 15, 2018, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC-199, that it be confirmed. In the matter of R-51 and 52, that they do pass. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? I'd like to defer EC-194, that is the mayor's appointment of Philip Snyder, to the lodgers' Tax Advisory Board. I move deferral until the September 5th meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones for deferral until the September 5th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now under Item 9, that is the Consent Agenda. Counselors, are there any changes to the Consent Agenda? Before we vote, I'd like anyone that is here this evening, that is on the Consent Agenda, that is going to be appointed to any boards or commissions, to please stand and be recognized. I know there were quite a few that we're going to be getting appointed tonight. We want to thank you for your service, even though you haven't been voted on yet, but it's coming quickly.[1743.15][1743.15](Laughter).[1744.15][1744.15](Applause).
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Borrego?
I would like to recognize someone who's in the audience tonight, Alan Reed, Dr. Reed. Would you please stand? Alan Reed is actually a former city councillor, and he was one of my mentors when I was in grad school, so I just wanted to recognize him. Thank you for being here.
Dr. Reed, thank you for being here.[1771.22][1771.22](Applause). I move the approval of the Consent Agenda. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. Again, thank you for wanting to serve our community. We are now under approvals. We're going to move the agenda item around just a bit, and the first item is going to be EC-203, the appointment of Kathy Kathy Duhigg to the position of city clerk. Ms. Duhigg, if you would please come forward. And I'd like to move confirmation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Borrego. Welcome, Ms. Duhigg.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any questions for Ms. Duhigg in reference to her confirmation? Would you like to make a couple of comments?
I just want, Mr. President, councilors, thank you for considering me for city clerk. I look forward to working with all of you, and I ask for your vote to confirm me.
Yes. Councilor Jones.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to talk with Ms. Duhigg. She went out of her way to meet with the councilors, or at least me. Very impressive. And I think she'll serve our city well.
Councilor Davis?
Ms. Duhigg, I just want to say, welcome. It'd be exciting to have you here in the city. I think we've had a chance to work on some projects together before. I really appreciate your work on making our elections in the state of New Mexico work better. A really important goal for us here in the city, and I appreciate your diligence to that. I commend the administration for spending the time to find the right person. We waited a while, and I'm really excited to have you on, on board. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seen none. We have a motion and a second for approval of EC-203, the appointment of Katie Duhigg to the position of city clerk. All those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And at this time, we are going to go to final actions, item C. This is Councilor Benton, R-59.
Hey, Mr. President. I move a due pass on R-56. This is amending committee substitute R-1818 to extend the deadline to a committee for, for a committee for public and private entities to conduct an analysis for the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, with intention to replace the currently adopted 2009.
Councilor Benton, we are moving to R-59?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That is to acquire property plan?
I'm sorry. I jumped to the first one. Beg your pardon. All right. So, I move a due pass on R-59. This is to acquire property, plan, design, construct, single-site supportive housing project for persons who are suffering from behavioral health issues and in need of housing, and adjusting Department of Family and Community Services FY18, City Housing Fund Appropriations. I move a due pass.
We have a motion and a second. And we also have an amendment. We also have several people sign up to speak. Councilor Benton, do you want to go to the public?
Yes. I don't know whether the amendment might be relevant to some of the things that the public might have to say or ask about. So, if so, we'll just clarify that at the time.
Okay. Let's go and go to the, to the public. There will be a two-minute time limit. The bell will, will turn yellow at a minute and a half, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining. At the two-minute time limit, the bell will turn red, stating your time has expired. What I will do is I will call the first five names. I want you to come to the front. There is seating available for you, and be prepared to speak. Roy Johnson, followed by Dan Garcia, followed by Daniel Gorman, followed by Mrs. or Mr. Flowers, followed by Doreen McKnight. Sir Johnson, welcome.
Hi. My name is Roy Johnson. I'm the president and councilors. I'm the owner of the Sumner &amp; Dean Art Gallery at 517 Central Northwest Downtown. If you haven't been there, it's a block west of the Chemo Theater. I'm one of the more higher-end retail businesses downtown. And when I found out about this project-
Excuse me, one moment, please. Dan, if you would take a seat for just a moment, and we'll call you up to speak.
I thought you told us all five minutes to come up.
And I know there's, but no, there's a place for you to sit here in the front, Dan. There's seating available. Thank you. Go and proceed.
And when I, when I found out about this project, I contacted all of the council members, and I really only had a dialogue from one of you. That was Pat Davis. Thank you very much. And that's what I'm here to address. Pat's actual email from me was quite lengthy, but what I want to address is that he said, "Most businesses seem supportive." And that's what I'm here to address. Of the, of the business community, the, the developers I spoke to, the residential people downtown, the storefronts, the restaurants downtown, most of the people I spoke to had never heard of this project. So, how could they be supportive of it? The people I did speak to, of them, most of them are not supportive of it. I think we're all a little fearful of the fact that this project has come forward, and there was one person who responded to the RFP. And that happened to be somebody that wanted to do a project downtown. I think that we aren't really sure if it's right for the downtown to be the burden, to build a, a village for the homeless downtown. Is it really the responsibility of downtown to be the sole person responsible for our homeless community? And so, I'm hoping that y'all will reevaluate this and, and look at all of the opportunities, rather than this one RFP, this one RFP that we have received.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Dan Garcia.
Hello. My name is Dan Garcia with Garcia's Kitchen. Oh, you're talking to somebody else. Should I start talking now? I just want to say that, you know, I think this is a good thing that's happening, and I think it needs to happen for the homeless people around Albuquerque. Maybe the area that they're putting it in is a little hard on the businesses all around them and downtown to bring, you know, everything in the downtown area. If these people have facilities to go to to get medical attention, and then they wander off to downtown and all the businesses around us. It, it's really affected our Fourth Mountain Road location. I mean, people are intimidated. They're confronted. Homeless people are constantly going into the restaurant. We feed them. I give them money. I do things to try to get them moving. It, it's a problem. I also wanted to mention that we own the property on Fourth and Rosemont, where there's, where the, the facility's going to be built. St. Martin's is going to be built. They came to offer us to purchase it. At first, we're all for it, but we didn't know what it was all about. I mean, I'd like to think this is a good thing, that, you know, it housed people in there and get them off the streets. But, you know, we barely found out about this about two, three weeks ago, and we didn't know how to react to if we want to sell the property or not. And I don't know how they planned to build all that facility if we didn't sell our property. I'm sure, I'm sure they could figure it out. It just wouldn't be as big as it would be if we did sell it. So, my, the bell just went off, so I'm-
You still have 30 seconds.
Oh, you're right. So, anyway, I just, I know there's a lot of other places possibly that are available out there that wouldn't bring them right downtown in that area. But, you know, it's, I know it's all up to you guys what you're going to do, but I'm just saying it really affects the businesses all around us. I mean, the homeless has gotten bad. Our sales have gone down $3,000 to $5,000 a week. And, you know, it's, it's definitely hurt us.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Councilor Benton.
Dan, I appreciate you calling me and, and listening to my side of the story, too. And, and I think I expressed to you that, that I do understand how hard it is on, on businesses around that existing St. Martin's day, day drop-in center and day shelter that they have. And also, explain that I used to live in the neighborhood. I lived there for 10 years before and after St. Martin moved in. And we, we recognize that's a problem, and also a problem for downtown, because these folks are on foot. That's a short distance. Yes, they're downtown as well. It's kind of a, it's a route, as we know, of, of people walking. But, I mean, I just want to make clear, this, this project will house 42 individuals. Those 42 individuals, that amongst them, I'm sure, will be people who are presently on the street downtown. So, we're also going to be working very hard as far as future contracts with St. Martin's itself, as to, as to what's expected of them. And I think sometimes the city has fallen down and not expected enough of our contractors that do some of this kind of work, as far as how they operate. So, I just want to make that clear. But, but we appreciate coming down, and, and I know it's been tough. I, I'm aware. And that the, you're not the only one, of course, and many people are being affected by those services in that area. So, the point I want to make is just that, that this is not going to be adding to those services. And, and I would hope that some of the people that you are dealing with will end up being inside their own place with their own home and don't need to come to your door.
That's true.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your time. Thank you for being here. Daniel Gorman, followed by Laurel Flowers, followed by Doreen McKnight, followed by Frank Garcia, followed by Sonia Burke. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a documentary filmmaker. I've dealt with, I made a film about supportive housing for homeless addicts in New York City in 2002. Supportive housing done well is an incredible way to address people in our community who have this, been disadvantaged. I like to tell people, we're all probably about four bad decisions away from being homeless ourselves if we're not careful. And we all, and our families, probably have people who have mental health challenges. As a member of this community, oh, and let me say this. I don't envy all of you this responsibility. Doing this project is so complex. Just the sheer number of, of, the sheer variety of data that you have to, to comprehend to get this done must be daunting. I think what a lot of the community members are asking is for a little bit more time to make certain that we get this right. Because the idea is that we have something that provides progress over time. Durable progress is what I like to call it. So, not one year, not two years, not three, but 10 or 20. And hopefully, we deal, I mean, we're always going to have the homeless issue, unfortunately. But more than anything, I also wanted to speak for the communities who do not want this supportive housing unit to go forward. I've met and I've talked with so many of them. And what they've articulated to me is they don't want to be casted as people who want to otherize the marginalized people in our community. They want to help them, and they want to help them over time, and they want to make sure that, again, it is durable progress. I'd like to understand what has been done, the scholarship behind it, the data that says that this specific housing unit is absolutely the best choice for this locale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurel Flowers, welcome.
Thank you. I work right across the street from the park at Third Street and I-40. Sorry, Second and I-40, right next to Rio Bravo Brewing. I've been working for the same company for 20 years. Been at that facility for 18. I continually see the homeless situation getting worse and worse downtown. I'm looking at installing a fence around our entire business property, because I constantly have homeless people sleeping in front of our, our doorways and creating a safety concern for my employees and customers. We've had been threatened by employee, by homeless people if we asked them to leave. I know that there is a problem, but we're asking for a deferment on this issue until other ideas can be explored. I don't feel that the council is taking into account the businesses downtown and what the homeless problem is doing to our business. You want to continue to grow business downtown, bring more tourists, bring more visitors, bring more business, but increasing the homeless is not going to, to help us grow or achieve those goals in any way. So, I guess that's all. Just, I'm, I'm hoping that you guys can defer this until other options can be looked at. I know there is a problem. I know there is a solution. It's going to be a long-term solution, but I really think you need to take into account the business owners and managers and the safety for us and our employees.
Councilor Benton, I think, has a comment.
I, I just wanted to say one thing with regard to what you said. I appreciate your coming down to speak. By definition, this is going to be 42 less homeless, all right? Not adding homeless to downtown. I just want to make that really clear.
But if there's 1,400 homeless people downtown, what good is 40 beds going to do to the 1,400 downtown? 40 beds?
They're going to, it's going to, it's going to put a dent into it.
And it's going to bring another 200 downtown looking for room.
Pardon me. Let me, let me finish. Let me ask, answer your question. Admittedly, they're going to, it, it's a small dent. And admittedly, we have to build a lot more projects to house the homeless with supportive services if we want them to not be on the street and having to be dealing with them the way you are having to. So, I just wanted to make that really clear. And then the only other thing is, with regard to deferral, the reason that, that this is in hurry, let me explain what, what happened. A housing, a recognized registered housing development organization came to the Department of Family and Community Services last year with this project. They have, as a recognized and pre-recognized, pre-approved housing development organization, they didn't have to go to an RFP. Some, the idea that, that they had to be an RFP was, the normal process would be that somebody like this, if they had a project like this, would just come right in, walk in the door, ask for the support of the city. This entity, which is partnering with St. Martin's, is, is, came to, to the city again last year with a commitment, a preliminary commitment for $4 million grant from the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority. So, that's a big grant that they had already achieved.
It's my understanding that that-
Yeah. Excuse me. Let me finish.
Go and let him proceed.
Let me finish my statement. This is, we're not going to have a debate up here, okay? I care, care and listen to your points. But, but the reason that we are at this point need to move forward is that grant has a, has a limited time on it. And, and if we don't, if we don't receive it, then, then we won't be able to build it. So, I'm sure some folks would be happy here. I would just say that, that this is removing 42 people from that population that's causing you so much trouble. And I do sympathize for the trouble that you're going through.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. Ms. Flowers, thank you for your time. Doreen McKnight, followed by Frank Garcia.
President Sanchez, I respectfully request, as a designated representative of the Neighborhood Association, that I have a few more minutes, or that the two other board members who signed up to cede their time to me, as we have a statement.
Basically, how are the rules proceed? They would have to come up and speak on behalf of this issue, but you will have two minutes. So, go and proceed.
Thank you, Judge. I'm sorry. Thank you, President Sanchez. My name is Doreen McKnight, and I'm the current president of the Wells Park Neighborhood Association. For 30 years, Wells Park residents and Wells Park businesses have been negatively impacted by the location and operation of Hope Works, formerly known as St. Martin's facility at 1201 Third Street. We are deeply concerned about the ongoing impact of their current facility and the increased negative impact that could result from the proposed 42-unit, single-site facility directly adjacent to their current operation. This project laudably seeks to, to house the most chronically homeless, mentally ill, and presumably substance-dependent individuals in the city. However, the Wells Park Neighborhood supports this effort and is not directly opposed to the Housing First model or the intent behind the project. We are concerned about the failure of both the city and Hope Works to address any of the serious negative impacts that they have had on our historically lower-income community, and how there has been little effort to address these impacts within, with respect to this current project until the past few weeks. As a neighborhood association that encompasses all residents and businesses located within our boundaries, we support the businesses and share all of their same concerns regarding this project. Many items not addressed in the proposed development agreement in an enforceable way include how this facility will be secured, will it be gated, will there be resident-only access, who is allowed on the property at any given time, will there be a curfew, what type of meaningful security will be provided, will it have 24-hour onsite professional security or just an RA, how will this operation interact with the current day facility, will there be medication management, psychiatric services, drug rehabilitation, will residents be required to participate in those services, how will the provider ensure medication compliance, and how will the property manager ensure there is no illicit drug use or illegal activity on the site, under what circumstances will individuals be evicted, how will the developer ensure the safety and privacy of the adjacent residences? These are all many questions we still have yet to be answered. The neighborhood acknowledges that we have been in communication with the director of Hope Works and have begun very preliminary negotiations regarding what can be called a good neighbor agreement that would facilitate some of the requests we have. However, this agreement is not a requirement, nor a condition of the development agreement.
Thank you for your time. Frank Garcia.
How's it going?
Welcome.
I realize that you're going to have, I'd like, was it eight or $8 million or $9 million towards this project, but it seems like that money could be used as, on a larger scale to like maybe the West Side Jailhouse, or the downtown jailhouse that's been unoccupied for many years. That $9 million could renovate, get like four, 300 rooms instead of 40 rooms. And it seems like you guys rushed this too fast. We didn't have a say-so. They put up Noonday, because we, they said that it was zoned for it. They, they went under disguise as a church and also opened up as Noonday. They knew the impact when it was on Central and Broadway. And then they knocked down the beautiful school on Second Street, Stronghurst. All of a sudden, they had a big sign that said, "Architect Consultation." All of a sudden, they had a big sign that said Architect Consultation. All of a sudden, they come in with a bulldozer and blows down that beautiful building and left the willing they should have knocked down, they left those up. And now it's, it's a, it's a barracks cemetery there now. It just destroyed the neighborhood. And it seems like we're getting the impact of this whole area is just, we're like, we're like the Skid Row of Albuquerque now in its impact. We're getting victimized, we're getting broken into, we're getting stabbed, we're getting killed, there's murders in the park. You guys see it there, Coronado Park, the Dog Park, it, it's a travesty to this Albuquerque. And then Cynthia, I talked to Cynthia, she's the economic development director, how can she get a business here in Albuquerque when it's turning, people are looking at it as an ugly city now? It's destroyed our city. And the thing is, we need it on a larger scale, this money has to go to a bigger, bigger project, get St. Martin's a bigger campus, how can they do a little one half a block, nine million dollar project when you can get a bigger campus? I know the old jailhouse on the West Side's been occupied for 15 years and the downtown office, you guys offer that one, you offer them $1 to sell to Texas Development if they would renovate it, you know, but they don't want that facility is downtown either. You guys try to put it all in this part of town and now the guy from Lowe's got stabbed, the neighbors are getting stabbed, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting, it's just, it's unbelievable the trouble we're going through now. And if, you know what, all of a sudden Wells Park Community Center, now they come in a homeless shelter. If you go into the lobby, it's full of homeless, the park's full of homeless, there's needles everywhere. It's, it's a travesty to the city of Albuquerque.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Sonia Burke, Rachel Smith, Tad Naminski, and Joe Brighton, welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sonia Burke and I'm an attorney downtown and I also am the secretary of the Board of St. Martin's Now Hope Works. And thank you all for the attention you gave this entire project. What St. Martin's does and provides for the community is one of a kind, and I think that is spoken to by the fact that there was only one respondent to this. They provide services to a population that the rest of us can easily forget. And I think that talking about moving this, this project out of downtown is more of an appeal to moving it out of sight and out of mind. And, you know, I've worked downtown now for six years. I grew up in New Mexico, I grew up on Mountain, actually. And so I left for 10 years, I came back because I care about New Mexico and I care about the future of our city and I think it has a lot of potential. And I think that these people need our help. And this project is going to be really, really, really beneficial. And I understand all the concerns about the neighborhood because I see it every day, I work one block away. And these people need a little compassion and they need a place to live, and that's what this project is. And so I think that it's very easy to sit back and wish that we could move our problems elsewhere so we wouldn't have to see them. And I think it would be easy to move a population that needs our help far away so that we wouldn't have to see them. But the more important concern is how we fix this problem, and I think that this project is a huge step forward. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Rachel Smith, followed by Tad Naminski, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the City Council. My name is Rachel Smith and I'm the Policy Director at Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless, and I've come to voice my support for this project. A fundamental cause of homelessness is the widening affordability of housing, the widening gap of affordability. And our city must continue to invest in affordable housing in order to contribute to an economic development. Evidence shows that when people have stable, decent homes they can afford, they are better able to improve their health and they have more resources to invest in their futures and in our economy. St. Martin's Single Site will ensure 42 additional permanent supportive housing units are available to people living with severe mental illness. This evidence-based approach will ensure that our most vulnerable neighbors will have a place they can feel calm, comfortable, and part of our community. Based on the Housing First philosophy, permanent supportive housing reduces the need for costly public services by providing people with permanent housing at a subsidized rate along with supportive services to help them maintain their housing. Housing First is based on the well-evidenced approach that affirms it's nearly impossible to address any physical or mental health issues without a permanent roof over your head. Affordable housing has positive impacts on mental health and well-being, and research has shown stable housing decreases depression and anxiety. Affordable housing is the foundation for providing services to people with serious mental illness with the dignity of integration with our wider community. It is the basis of community-based mental health care. We must continue to invest in permanent supportive housing such as this single-site proposal to ensure our economy thrives. According to a Harvard Joint Center study for housing studies, families in affordable housing have more purchasing power. They're able to invest more in food, on retirement, to address debt, and when they're, when they're not thinking about their housing costs. Lastly, further evidence shows that supportive housing benefits communities by improving the safety of our neighborhoods, enhancing city blocks with newer rehabilitated properties, and increasing or stabilizing property values over time. I ask for your support of this bill, a step in the right direction towards addressing our housing needs in Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Benton has a question or a comment.
Sure.
Thank you for coming to speak, Ms. Smith. So you deal with this population that, that everyone's talking about here tonight on a regular basis, and I'm sure you wouldn't disagree that there are crimes and criminals mixed in with this population, but that, that doesn't characterize the population as a whole. That's been my experience in 30 years living downtown also.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I do, I work in the area and we suffer from the same symptoms of poverty that the rest of the city does, and we see homelessness throughout the city, not just in downtown. And I don't think it's, you know, fair to equate homelessness and crime. I do, I respect the, the issues because we deal with them too at Healthcare for the Homeless, and we respect the concerns of public safety and we want to continue to work with our police department to improve that. And the first step is affordable housing. We know that's the answer to our, our problems here.
And, and when we, when we talk to our past and present APD commanders, I think they would agree with this, that there are, there are some wolves in sheep's clothing that blend in with the community and they get involved in some bad things and get people involved in bad things, without question. But, but the 42 dwelling units that are going to be provided here, I mean, are these people going to be, I mean, with, with the kind of program that's being proposed, I mean, would these people likely to be out doing that sort of thing when they check in every night and they have a social worker and so forth?
I mean, I think it's pretty clear that if you have housing, you're going to be less likely to engage in risky behaviors. I think the most important thing for us in our population is that the people that we serve are more likely victims of crime and they're victimized on a daily basis. And that's, when we talk about public safety, I think we should also be talking about the public safety of people that are our most vulnerable citizens.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next speaker is Tad Naminski.
My name is Tad Naminski. Well, very interesting. I'd like to know if Ken Sanchez would like to leave. Well, he's gone. He's not, he don't like hear from me. Well, I'd like to know who wants to leave? Own property, any one of you, City Council, here in downtown area? All this trash. Cynthia Borrego wants to? Yes, increase fine for littering, for throwing piece of paper. Now, look at, take a ride on the first street that I just passed by today, next to Albuquerque Healthcare Clinic for Homeless. Empty lot, small lot, right next to, on the east side of the street, right next to a homeless clinic, whole lot with trash piled up. Can we trust them? City, people can trust you in Albuquerque? No. Go take a ride, every of you, Council, go on the third street. Who wants to own, live and own property? I'm sorry, you totally wrong. How, that project sounds like Arton Central, build it before you purchase property. Where this project supposed to be? I don't know, can you tell me now? I guess you won't. That's same thing as Arton Central. Yes, Isaac Benton, that your district. And I'm, people, I am, and people tired of your lies.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Brighton, followed by Ron Taylor.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Joseph Britton. I'm the rector of St. Michael and All Angels Church on Montano. St. Michael's was one of the founding churches of St. Martin's some 30 years ago. And over the years, we have been deeply impressed by the holistic approach that it has taken to addressing the problem of the homeless. It's consistently focused on their spiritual, their economic, their physical, and their behavioral well-being. And so we strongly support the proposal that they have now because it seems a natural extension of that as they provide not only these remedial services but also an immediate response to homelessness of providing a place to live. To us, that's an extension of the long legacy and experience that they have in addressing this problem and is a natural extension of the work that they are already doing. So from our perspective as a Christian community here, it's a, a part of the work that St. Martin's has been building and extending and making a track record on for many years. So I speak in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Ron Taylor, followed by Edwina Cairo, followed by Danny Watley, followed by Mark Prando. Welcome.
Council President, members of the council. First of all, I was told that there was no sense in me coming here because the decision was already made. I hope that's not the case. I hope you're going to hear out everybody, both sides, of who's come to speak here tonight before you make your decision. I'm Ron Taylor. I'm an Albuquerque native, born and raised here, started in the North Valley. I want to tell you that I think you've got a great concern here, this council does, of how you can justify spending millions of dollars for only 40 people when we have over 1,200 to 1,300 homeless in our downtown area. How can you justify this expense? Bigger than that, though, and please hear me out, two words that you need to concern yourselves with as councilors, supportive services. Where is the commitment for the funding for supportive services for this project? If I've got it right, you don't have a commitment for it, that it is only a promise from the, it is a possible promise from the county, but you don't have a commitment for supportive services, for professional services, for maintenance, for police, for security. You're going to build a building and where is the money for the supportive services? If it's a commitment, then this is the same thing we heard for Art. We had a commitment from Congress for the funding and where is it? And we got stuck with it. Let's not do that again. Please, otherwise, this is a project destined to fail. We are going to have a building with nobody able to care for the people who are there and are going to be wandering aimlessly. And where is the funds in perpetuity? I'm not talking about one year. Where are the funds in perpetuity for each year that this project is going to take in order to provide necessary services? Members of the council-
Mr. Taylor.
Members of the council-
Thank you, Mr. Your time has expired, but thank you.
I just want to say-
Your time has expired, sir.
The city has one black eye, we don't need another. Thank you.
Next speaker, Edwina Cairo, followed by Danny Watley, followed by, by Mike Prando. And again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a member of the Wells Park Neighborhood Community and I just want to validate what Doreen McKnight stated. I attended a meeting of one of the neighborhood associations. There was a lot of questions that were not answered by the St. Martin's group that's initiating this project. I realize it's a great, it's a great initiative. It's good to have something set up for our homeless individuals, they need a lot of help. But a 42-room unit or housing unit is not going to satisfy that for the large homeless population that we do have. As I said, I just want to validate what our, what Doreen McKnight has said. I support the initiative of our Wells Park Neighborhood Association. I appreciate Mr. Benton's comments to our group at one time where we did meet with him. So I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Edwina. Danny Watley, welcome.
Mr. President, Councilor. My name is Danny Watley. I'm the director of The Rock at Noonday, formerly Noonday Ministry. Work closely with a lot of the councilors, present councilors and past councilors in the homeless issues and problems that we have in our community. I speak in support of St. Martin's and Hope Works, the, the building process and the project. It is one of those things, there's a lot of different things going on in, in the city to aid and to help in, in our homeless situation. This is one of many. And I think because it's, it's going to offer wraparound services and housing for the, the chronically homeless, it is a necessary step and it's a step in the right direction. I'm also serving as the, the co-chair of the Mental Health Response and Advisory Committee. That committee was created by the Court Appointed Settlement Agreement, and MRAC itself deals with two different areas. They deal with homelessness and they deal with the interaction of law enforcement with homelessness and interaction with law enforcement with those that are experiencing mental health crisis and behavioral issues. This project will help in a great way to alleviate some of those issues. It'll give law enforcement resources and places to go for those that need to be housed. Small number, there's no doubt. But again, it is one of those steps in the right direction. A lot of comments have been made, the, the main homeless ministries and services in this community have been around for a long time. This is not our first rodeo. And so we, we, we promise the community that everything will be done to, to make sure that we're good neighbors, make sure that we do things in a safe way and a secure way. But I speak in, in support of the, the, the new building situation with St. Martin's.
Thank you. Mike Prando.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. I'm just going to finish the statement from Doreen McKnight a little earlier. Before the $4 million in taxpayer dollars is given to Hope Works for construction of this facility, it's imperative that the city receive input and address concerns of the businesses and neighbors directly in the development agreement. It is also imperative that service providers, including Hope Works, be held accountable for their operation, their impacts in existing, I'm sorry, in existing contracts with the city. These city contracts must be more specific as to the operations for this or any other service provider. Be scrutinizing, be scrutinized regarding whether these providers are spending city funds appropriately, that they provide proof of actual outcomes, and that they directly address impacts on the surrounding community and including liability. We want to help the city make this a successful project for the individuals it is being built to serve as well as the surrounding community. However, the Wells Park Neighborhood Association opposes the approval of this development agreement and the appropriation of funding for this project unless and until the administration, the city council, and Hope Works addresses community concerns in an enforceable way in the development agreement. A good neighbor agreement is executed and there is guaranteed ongoing future accountability for this site. It's really nice that you guys always have the compassion to help the homeless, which is really a good thing, but it's time maybe to look at the compassion for the, the businesses, the kids, and the residents in the neighborhood. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mike. Again, please hold your applause. The next speakers will be Catherine Mexel, Connie B. Hill, Cheryl Hill, Kathy Kavanoff, and Robert DeGiulio. Again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
President Sanchez, councilors, these are concerns to neighbors and residents, and I'd like to emphasize them, they're the ones that Doreen had already cited. How will this faci, and I have to back up. These questions have not been answered yet in the development agreement or in any communication with the project team. How will this facility be secured? Will it be gated? Will there be residence-only access? Who is allowed on the property at any given time? Will there be a curfew? What type of meaningful security will be provided? Will it have 24 hours onsite professional security and not just an RA? How will this operation interact with the current day facility to the south? What exact services will be provided to residents on site? Will there be medication management, psychiatric services, drug rehabilitation? Will residents be required to participate in case management and other provided services or can they choose to refuse those services? How will the provider ensure medication compliance? How will property manager ensure that there is no illicit drug activity or ill- How will property manager ensure that there is no illicit drug activity or illegal activity on the site? Under what circumstances will individuals be evicted? How will the developer ensure the safety and privacy of the adjacent residences and businesses who will actually be operating the facility? Will the residents be permitted onto the day facility property and vice versa? Will residents be receiving any services at the day facility? If not, how will this be monitored? What recourse does the neighborhood and businesses have if the property is poorly managed, creates an unsafe environment and is not properly maintained? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Connie B. Hill, Cheryl -- again, please hold your applause. Connie B. Hill, Cheryl Hill, Kathy Kavanoff, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of this council. My name is Cheryl Hill. I am the resident manager for St. Martin's Hope Works Covenant House where I reside with 15 women. I am a registered alcoholic and drug tech. I am -- I am formerly homeless. I am a recovering alcoholic and addict and I have mental illness that was diagnosed in 2015. Doesn't make me volatile, doesn't make me untrainable, does not make me a functioning, non-functioning member of society. We're talking about a housing unit for 42 people. It's not just to be built and put up and to throw 42 people in there and say, "There you go." Yes, there will be rules. Yes, there will be contracts. Yes, there will be guidelines. Again, I live with our women. I am the residential manager and I am the unofficial life skills coordinator that I work with these women and I help them. I look to see what skills and services that they qualify for within our program as well as with the city. Are they in need of their GED? Are they needing their high school diploma? Are they wanting to go back to school? Are they wanting to do something better? How are we doing this with getting there in their own homes? Because this is temporary housing for us. Yes, we're talking 42 people out of more than likely 1,500 that we see, but that's a start. That's one step at a time. This does not mean that the people we're putting in here are going to be like what you've seen on television and I'll just reference the movie Sybil. That doesn't mean that. Doesn't mean that at all. Does not mean they're going to be left alone. It does not mean that their medications are not going to be managed. It does not mean that they're not going to be on a contract. It does not mean that they are not going to have to follow suit of the rules and regs that are placed within that contract.
Thank you, Miss Hill.
If you have any further questions, I'll be available afterwards.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie B. Hill, welcome.
Welcome back. I'm Connie B. Hill. I grew up in the neighborhood right between St. Martin's and the current healthcare for the homeless. For over a year, we met with all of the agencies at either Wells Park and/or Danny Watley's place and/or Jenny Metzler's place. We were having issues with needles and drugs and homeless and decided to have the roundtable discussion group. We met for every month for one month. The end result was absolutely nothing because the concerns of the business people only got worse, the violence, the business closings has only within the last year actually gotten worse. And I sincerely tried to work as a community to reach out to the nonprofits. Everyone knows me. I am sincerely passionate about the homeless because they live in my neighborhood, but I also have to call 911 every night just to go in my door. It's out of control. So guess what? Albuquerque, homeless vision. We paid $7,500 of our hard-earned money as a business alliance to reach out to Tom Carroll and come up with a positive solution, and here it is. And we are willing to spend more money, more time hours. We have architects, we have professionals, we have marker breweries, we have Remco Bolts, we have third-generation businesses, and I am proud to say I'm part of Wells Park and I grew up there and I went to kindergarten in a community center where kids can no longer go. We've gotten addressed in the press, we've talked to some of you. These are letters written from 2017 showing the history of St. Martin's, unfortunately, Wells Fargo, et cetera. I'll leave it for evidence. They've never been a good neighbor. We reached out to try to reach to them, okay. But we are positive. We want to work on a campus and that's what everybody's been talking about. The mayor, Terry Cole, everybody says campus, campus. I would venture to say we're just as smart, if not smarter, than San Antonio. Why can't we, as a community, find the right location? We talked with Diane and we do have locations--
Connie, my apologies, but your time has expired. Thank you. Kathy Kavanoff, Robert DeGiulio, Merit Tully, and then Connie Chavez. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilpeople. My name's Kathy Kavanagh. I'm a donor, a volunteer and a concerned citizen. Hope Works has been in its current location for over 30 years. I began volunteering there when I was 11, back when it was St. Martin's. Since then, a lot has changed. It has transformed from a day shelter to an organization providing wraparound services. What has impressed me the most is how Hope Works has responded to the needs of our homeless citizens with behavioral health services, with job training, with long-term housing. If you've ever taken a tour, it takes a couple of hours and you don't even really get to find out what they do unless you're there for hours. There's a need. They have found ways to address that need. I put my trust and my family's support and money behind this project because I do believe that they are working closely with this population to understand its needs. I understand the business owner's point of view. It is very frustrating. They are trying to run a business. They're saying, "How can you put a dent in this with 42 people?" Imagine if we had done this 20 years ago. Imagine if we had had the innovativeness that this project is trying to lead us to. If you've ever had anyone in your family with mental illness, it is not anything anyone would choose for themselves. If you've had to try to integrate somebody back into society, it is hell. And I believe that this project is trying to take our most vulnerable and wrap the services around them. If we kick the can and defer, which I'm clearly against, we are only going to lengthen the time that this is truly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert DeGiulio, followed by Merit Tully, followed by Connie Chavez, followed by Father Vincent Chavez. Welcome.
Yes, hi, thank you. You know, I've lived across the street from St. Martin's for 13 years and watched very closely what's been going on. You know, things have gotten a lot worse and I have various ideas of why that is. You know, not opposed to this housing thing because housing is the answer, but what doesn't work and what causes the problems that all these people have or the people that have spoken about having a problem is, you know, places like St. Martin's who do everything but house the homeless. So they attract homeless. There's homeless sleeping all within walking distance for breakfast or anything. At, you know, at a place like St. Martin's. The answer and Connie mentioned it is, you know, like a 20-acre site. Other cities have this. You have a 20 or more acre site on the edge of town. We could have it on the edge of town. Other people don't because they, you know, because they own property in town and that's where they put it. That, you know, they would house anybody that would want to be there. It would house, you know, you would house hundreds of people. And I've heard the excuse we can't, that we can't do it is, you know, looking at San Antonio, which had, you know, a millionaire oil man, you know, started the funding, but really all we need is, to start with, is trailers and tents. I mean, in other words, anything is better than a sidewalk. So, and trailers and tents don't cost much and, you know, you'd need the electricity and all that. And all these people that are, you know, fighting against it would be on your side. They would be supplying your things and cheering you on rather than opposing you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis, I think, has a comment or a question for you.
Robert, I just want to appreciate you coming down to do this. You and I have talked several times over the last few months about this project and how it's come together. And I think you are a great example of exactly what we need to be doing and see more in this because you're not someone who came and said no, you're somebody who came and offered their own research and time, like a lot of our community members, to offer a different solution and other options to be considered, no matter where we go with this tonight. I hope you'll be a part of the team that helps to develop a good neighbor program for St. Martin's because you are a neighbor there and I think they owe that to the neighborhood as they expand their services. And so I want to be sure you get a chance to meet Greg and their team tonight because as a neighbor, you have some valuable insight that I think needs to be included in that good neighbor plan. I want to appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to just say that we, you know, this, it's not happening right now, but I'm going to say that the campus plan is going to have to happen here, you know, and I can explain that to anybody who wants to hear that. But, you know, it's not going to happen this year, but it's, you know, it will happen and it has to happen here in Albuquerque.
And before you leave, Counselor Britton, Robert has a comment or question.
Robert, and thanks also for coming and having a long discussion with me and I appreciate and took to heart, actually, what you said about the campus and I invited myself on that trip to San Antonio. I don't think I was on the A-list, but I got on there somehow. Anyway, I went and it is impressive. I just want to say that one thing that did strike me, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this because you gave me the impetus to, you know, go try to get along on that trip and see it, is that regardless of how much money was spent, and a lot was spent, 100-plus million dollars and raised privately, which is very nice, the back end of that project or the back door, if you will, of that project, what people talk about, is that these kind of facilities and first response, if you will, to homelessness, you've got to have a, you've got to have housing at the end, you know, real housing at the end of that line, right? And this, I think, in this type of project is actually something in discussions with San Antonio that they lack. They've got the big campus, but they don't have that transition very well brought out. And I think the city of Albuquerque and Burnley County are working on that and do and are looking towards that long term. So I think there's probably, you know, ultimately, as far as the full beldow plan and the total solution, what you're describing is very well, may be part of it. And I think we saw that in San Antonio. It doesn't negate the need for housing, the most critically have, and as long as they're on the street, they're very hard to identify and very hard to treat.
Well, see, that's where a campus would work, is that the campus would be a triage center. You're finding people that are, you know, need this service and you give that, you're finding people are ready for housing, they're screened and rehabbed, whatever, so they would be the ones going to this housing project.
I understand.
So it is, it is, it's like a campus, like a college. You don't live the rest of your life. You're trying, you're being trained to go somewhere better. So everybody there at the campus is trying to be pushed to some other place. The campus is just like a college campus. It's where people go to get training in order to go out in the world.
One does not preclude the other, is my point.
Okay.
Robert, thank you very much for being here. Merit Tully, followed by Connie Chavez. Welcome, Merit.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sanchez, Counselor Britton, Counselors. I'm Merit Tully. I'm here as President of the Near North Valley Neighborhood Association. I'm also here as the Chair of an ad hoc homeless committee that includes representatives from Near North Valley, Stronghurst, Wells Park and Santa Barbara Martinez Town. We work with Counselor Britton on his homeless solutions response team. Over the last three years, we've worked to draw attention to the impacts of concentrated homelessness around homeless services providers and we've asked for help. We have not taken a NIMBY approach. We have not asked providers to move. We've asked the city to balance the toll that concentrated homelessness is taking on the economic well-being of our businesses and our property owners and the emotional toll that it's taking on everyone. We want investment in our neighborhoods. We haven't gotten very far. With respect to this project, early this year at Counselor Britton's suggestion, St. Martin's development team made a presentation to our committee and then we arranged meetings with our respective associations. In late June, we provided detailed comments to Family and Community Services and the gist of those comments were this: We support more housing, but as this is the first permanent supportive housing project in New Mexico and it will serve as a model for other projects throughout our area and throughout the city, it's got to be done right and it's got to be done in a way that also addresses the impacts on the surrounding businesses and residents. We have two vulnerable populations here, those who live, work in the area, and those who don't have homes. Last week, we were provided with a copy of the draft development agreement that sets the terms for this project. We appreciate Counselor Britton's assurances that our concerns with that agreement will be taken into consideration. Whether you approve the funding today or not, we're counting on the administration, Counselor Britton and the development team to continue to work with the community to improve this project so it really works. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Britton.
And thank you, Merit, as usual, for your tenaciousness and for your positive input. So it's influenced the amendment that we have before us tonight that I mentioned earlier and we'll read that and vote on that later. But also, as you point out and correctly point out, and I want to say that publicly, we do have a commitment that I, at least, am going to work with you to see that the provision that you're concerned about are in the development agreement, so.
And as you know, I have a list.
Thank you, Merit.
Thank you.
Next, we have Connie Chavez, followed by Father Vincent Chavez, and the last speaker will be Antonio Sanchez. Welcome.
Thank you, President Sanchez, members of the council. My name is Connie Chavez. I'm the Executive Director of the Barrett Foundation, the homeless shelter for women and children. We also provide affordable housing opportunities through leasing and rental assistance to this most vulnerable population. And our biggest challenge really is that there are not enough affordable housing units available, nor does that balance against the number of housing vouchers available. What we know is that 42 units of permanently supportive housing serving this most vulnerable population is a start and we have to make it happen because if we don't start somewhere, the face of homelessness is not always who you think it is. And my own family has experienced with homelessness with behavioral health issues. And so it's important to understand that when we talk about these people, those people, that it's our people. It's the people that live in this community and we have a responsibility and they have a right to have decent, affordable housing and access to services within the city that make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Britton.
Connie, thanks for coming down to speak. And, you know, you've been in housing development prior to being with Barrett House. I know that you, well, we should have full disclosure, right? We worked together on the Arbela de Vida Senior Housing Project and other projects. And I know that, I wonder if you could speak to this thing about, well, we should defer this, we should let the $4 million from MFA go and then use the cities and the county money, which also adds up to $4 million, for a more perfect solution. And also, I don't think the projects that we worked on were targeted to have these kind of onsite supportive services. It really makes a difference. But just from that funding standpoint, some verification of why this is kind of, we've got a deadline and we've got to meet it.
Sure. I mean, I think the access to funding to build these projects is critical and the timing of them is critical to ensure, one, that the funds stay available, that they're used according to how they are intended, how they are allocated. And when you lose that opportunity for these funding sources, it doesn't come back. It doesn't come back quickly and you lose an opportunity to create great affordable housing for the people who are most in need. I was also born and raised in Wells Park and the homeless situation is, you know, it's there. It is what it is until the state of our economy changes in the state of New Mexico and we address the issues as a whole. This is going to continue to be a problem, but folks deserve access to quality, affordable housing and the cost is the cost. It is what it is. And these opportunities for funding are few and far between, so it's important to move this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie. Next speaker is Father Vincent Chavez. Welcome, Father.
Thank you, councilors. I am Father Vincent Chavez, the pastor of St. Therese Parish and Catholic School. The proposal before you for construction of additional housing at Hope Works will not solve this serious issue. We, the residents and businesses of north downtown Wells Park and Near North Valley, are overstressed and at our wits' end. None of us, the deprived neighbor or our residents with an actual roof over their heads, has a quality of life, security, and well-being as long as the homeless issue has no real and permanent solution. We, the residents and businesses of this part of the city, are pleading with you to please defer the Hope Works proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Chavez. The last speaker will be Antonio Sanchez. Welcome.
Thank you, President Sanchez and council members. My name is Antonio Sanchez, and I'm here mainly so that we can provide community solutions to a real existing problem. It's great, there's not one person here that spoke tonight that was against helping or housing, but it's apparent that the, that the problem has masticized, it's grown. And so what we'd like to really see is not a rush, and not to defer because we don't want it to happen, but to really get the brilliant minds together to provide a real solution, hence the campus idea, just like we would at a university. We have, you know, housing, cafeteria, job skills, and it's not that we're pushing them out because we want them out of sight, out of mind, it's also to provide them a protective area so that they're not hounded by drug dealers. I work downtown, I know many of the homeless, I know many of the drug dealers, and so when they're leaving St. Martins, or they're going to Noonday, they're passing a liquor store, they're passing the beer, and the drug dealers are waiting there, and so they're just attacking them. And so I think really we're, we don't want this to be divisive here, but mainly a real solution, and to say, let's defer the RF, the 8.9 million is what I understand the cost is, and let's put it into something real, let's get private and involved with this to make this sustainable. And I think that's really what the consensus, as I understand it to be, is because we all really want to see a compassion, not just for the homeless, for those in need, but also for the families, for the kids that should enjoy the public parks, so that we can see them picnicking again, throwing a frisbee, and not just filled with, you know, those.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment on this agenda item. We have an amendment on the floor. Councilwoman Benton.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So I referred to this early, and I referred to it a bit during some of my questions and responses for the speakers, and this is an amendment, first of all, this is, this action by the council is to appropriate the funding for the project so that we can keep the MFA money in play, and without it, we would lose $4 million towards the project, or any project. And subsequent to this, the council will have to approve a development agreement, and that's what Ms. Tully and others were speaking about. The development agreement is the actual agreement between the city and, on behalf of the county, their money with the, with the proposer of the project. So there'll be a second bite at the apple by the, by the council, and that's when we're talking about, I mean, it is up to the administration and not the council to, to create these agreements. We have to be very clear about that. If we pass these funds and we move this project forward, the administration is and has been already carrying the ball on the development agreement and on the memorandum of understanding with the county, which my understanding is that should be signed by the county this week, it's already been signed by our, our chief administrative officer. But the development agreement is an opportunity to, to get some more protective language and along the lines of what we heard from our Wells Park neighbors and from business people, I mean, less so from the business folks, but, but I think some of the commitments that we're talking about making will benefit them as well and help, help protect from some feared mismanagement of the project. Now, I'm not going to say, I don't think that this project is going to be mismanaged, it's by, by requirement of the city and by requirement of the MFA, it has to be professionally managed. So there are management agreements that, that the proponents will, will make for, for the ongoing operation. But I'll just read the, the changes. We do have a couple of changes in the beginning. This would be floor amendment number one, Mr. President, and I'll go ahead and move it.
We have a motion and a second from floor amendment number one to R-18-59.
And the first couple of things are some, are some cleanup. On page one, line 23, delete $3 million and insert $4.930 million in lieu thereof. On page two, and that, this accounts for the county money as well, corrective, but these are, these are funds that we're leveraging with the county and with the MFA. Then on page two, line three, delete the period and insert "and," and in lieu thereof the period. And then on page two, following the, after line three, whereas Burnaleo County has committed $2 million for the project, and then on page two, line 13, delete $2 million and insert $4 million, so that's the county's contribution to the project. The county also, by the way, folks, as was mentioned, they are, they will be continuing to work with us on the operating expenses of the project. And this project, by the way, was a priority of the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Government Commission's Behavioral Health Initiative. Page two, line 14, before scope, insert $2 million, is contingent upon final execution of an MOU with Burnaleo County, so that's what we're expecting, actually, this week, but we've got that contingency in there because it hasn't been signed yet. On page two, insert the following after line 17, section three, "The city commits to making street lighting improvements, cleaning and controlling access to alleys, cleaning sidewalks, parks, and other public spaces, and constructing infill sidewalks within the Wells Park neighborhood, and shall endeavor to improve the overall safety and economic well-being of the neighborhood. The city further commits to work with residents, businesses, and the Wells Park Neighborhood Association over the next six months to develop a plan and set priorities for these improvements." So these would be improvements in the public right of way. The city, section four, "The city commits to work with residents, businesses, and the Wells Park Neighborhood Association to address community concerns and to facilitate a Good Neighbor Agreement between the community and St. Martin's Hope Works." So that, a lot of the questions, I mean, that didn't answer the detailed questions that some of the neighbors were asking, but we do recognize that they have detailed questions, and we are committed, I'm committed personally, and I think the administration is as well, because we, we ran this by them and they were wholeheartedly supportive of the amendment. So that's floor amendment number one, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number one to R-18-59. Are there any questions? See none? All those in favor signify by saying yes and raise your hand. Yes, those opposed? That carries unanimously. We are back on the bill. And before we open this up to debate before the council and discussion, I'd like to welcome Yes Housing, who will be working on this project if this legislation passes, to make a couple of comments, and he would keep them brief. Welcome, Mr. Lucero.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I'll be brief. I think everything was said. This is an important project. This is something that Yes Housing was brought into over almost two years ago to try to find a project like this to address this very growing need. As you know, I've been involved in government for many years, and I've said this, and I'll say it again, we have to start somewhere. This is only a small project. Yes, it's only 42 units, but it's 42 units starting in the right direction. Let's use this as a model. Let's use this as a model to see what we can do to make it right, so that way when we get into the next project, we know what we need to do. I firmly believe this is a great project, and it's something that's greatly needed. There are concerns. We've committed to working with the neighbors, and we will continue to work with them to get a development agreement and a, and a working agreement that we all can live with for years to come. But I really want to turn it over to Greg Morris from St. Martin's Hope Works and let him make a presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Morris, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of city council. My name is Greg Morris, and I'm the executive director of Hope Works, formerly known as St. Martin's Hospitality Center. Our agency has been serving those experiencing homelessness in Albuquerque for more than 30 years. At our day shelter on Third Street alone, this past year, we served more than 170,000 meals. In addition to meals, seven days a week, we provide showers, clothing, short and long-term storage, and mailroom services for folks without an address. Over the last 30 years, the homeless population has grown significantly in terms of sheer numbers and complexity. Our agency has inevitably evolved and grown over the years as a natural response, becoming the largest homeless service provider in New Mexico. Most of the services we provide, however, occur off-site, away from our shelter. For example, we currently provide behavioral health treatment and case management services to more than 600 individuals a year. Our employment division employs more than 300 individuals a year and continues to operate the nationally recognized Better Way Initiative funded by the city, as well as the Hope Cafe inside the Museum of Natural History. We run two reentry transitional programs for men and women coming out of incarceration, dismissal and covenant house. We operate Casa de Phoenix, a transitional housing program for those recovering from substance abuse. We have a longstanding PSR program, an ACT team, and a therapy and healing arts center. And we collaborate very closely and coordinate outreach with other critical service provider agencies such as Healthcare for the Homeless, Heading Home, First Nations, The Rock at Noonday, Steel Bridge, and others. But perhaps the most important thing that our agency does is permanently house over 450 individuals and families a year in eight different programs. This is scattered site housing in apartments that we do not own and in locations that our case manager and clinicians travel to routinely to help keep people housed. What differentiates single-site housing with scattered-site housing is that behavioral health and case management services are readily available on-site for those with the highest needs. In short, scattered-site housing simply doesn't work for the hardest to serve. Housing has always been and will always be the antidote for homelessness. And permanent supportive housing is the single best proven solution for ending homelessness with the chronic homeless population. Cities around the country that have had any measure of success in reducing chronic street homelessness have built single-site permanent supportive housing projects. The project before you this evening is a 42-unit permanent supportive housing project, which will be the first single-site project in New Mexico. And though this project will be very close in proximity to our existing day shelter on Third Street and in the same neighborhood we have been in for 30 years, it will be treated as a separate facility, operated independently, with program, staff, on-site, and attended 24/7, including security. There is no question of the need for a project like this in Albuquerque and in New Mexico. We do not need a study to know that the single-site model works. That is why this project is already supported by MFA with funding from both the National Housing Trust Fund and State Housing Trust Fund, with approximately 4.5 million in funding. The recent RFP award from the city and county tied together with an MOU and contingent on your approval tonight would leverage this funding and build the first-of-its-kind project in New Mexico. Lastly, Hope Works acknowledges the individuals, that individuals experiencing homelessness and extreme poverty are human souls that need all of the things everyone in this room needs, at minimum, food, shelter, and a sense of community. And while there is no ideal neighbor, there is no ideal neighborhood anywhere in this country where services, for these services to be provided, those we, those that we serve should not have to apologize for where they are. And despite constant conflation by the media and others, crime and homelessness, crime and homelessness is, homelessness are two different issues with different solutions. In fact, those experiencing homelessness, as has been pointed out previously this evening, are most often the victim of random crime and violence because of their vulnerability. We do wish to acknowledge our neighbors and local businesses who find it difficult to abide the steady traffic of people without homes, and ask them to work with us in a spirit of compassion and understanding. We have met with all of our neighborhood associations over the past several months and are working towards a Good Neighbor Agreement. We want to do everything in our power to mitigate the neighborhood impacts of our important work so long as it is reasonable, does not impose an undue burden on our limited resources, and does not violate the human rights or constitutional freedoms of those we serve. And finally, I wish to acknowledge all of the saints and heroes, many of whom are in this room, who work tires, tirelessly on behalf of those experiencing homelessness. Hope Works believes we are the right agency at the right time in the right neighborhood, poised to make history in New Mexico on behalf of those experiencing homelessness. Your action this evening may well house and bring much-needed services to 42 individuals who are sleeping rough on the streets of Albuquerque tonight. I will stand for questions, along with the development team, which includes Thaddeus of Yes, Jackie Fishman of Consensus Planning, Doug Heller of Mullen Heller Architects, and Nevin Marquez, our Director of Behavioral Health and Supportive Housing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Benton.
Thanks, Greg. Just to kind of loop in a little bit, there was some email today, I know, from, from some of the same folks from, from the Solutions Response Team and the Wells Park Neighborhood Association. I saw that you had answered a lot of those in that email, maybe not everybody had seen those. Sounded like there might be some new ones, but, but I think we've already had this discussion that, that I really want to facilitate that, that dialogue going back and forth. I didn't honestly get negative feedback about the meetings that you had had with them prior, so, you know, I was sort of surprised that, that there was such a sense of disappointment on their behalf, but nonetheless, these are things that are, I think they've raised legitimate questions. I think a lot of them, as you say, some of the idea that there would be a curfew, that they would be kept in their room after a certain hour, something like that, they are, they do enjoy the constitutional rights and also rights under the Fair Housing Act to come and go, but, but nonetheless, it sounds like there are going to be good controls over visitors and hour, hours for visitors and things like that. I did, and this might be for your consultant team, Jackie or Mr. Heller, they've also asked a few questions of me, and I didn't really have the answer, about details of the design and the ability to tweak the design in relatively small ways, and I wondered if they could address that, or you could as well, if you like.
Sure. I will defer that question to our architect, if he's still here.
Yes, so again, Mr. Heller, my question was mostly about, you know, there, I'll just think of one example, right? I think I heard something about couldn't the building moved five feet more away from the sidewalk, or something along those lines. Are those things that are still, we're still in a position to tweak going forward?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Benton, councilors, absolutely. The drawings that we have so far are very conceptual, really to get a sense of the scale of this project with, on the site. As we've met with the neighbors over the course of many months, that is one of the suggestions, is wider sidewalks, a bigger setback, and that, we've taken all that into consideration, and I can honestly say that we are so early in the process of design that anything that, as Greg said, is reasonable and would enhance the project can be incorporated into that at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the development team? Thank you for your presentation. We are back to the council for discussion and debate.
Mr. President, could I ask, Greg, come back up with, with St. Martin's? I really do appreciate what St. Martin's has done through this whole city, and I know they've got lots of contracts with the City of Albuquerque and really work well with us. In listening to public comment tonight, one of the issues that I heard come from a lot of the neighbors and businesses is that, that St. Martin's in the past may have not been as good as neighbors as they're trying to be now going forward. And I know that a couple of the neighborhood groups that they were, tried to meet with St. Martin's at the time and try to come up with what we're trying to come up now would be. would be a good neighbor policy, and had to deal with a lot of issues that, what I think I'm hearing is that Saint Martin's wasn't willing to deal with. So how do you address that? So I think there's a lot of belief that maybe what you're saying now and with this, which I really agree with this amendment, but moving forward about being a good neighbor with the businesses and the neighborhoods in this area. But I can get in the feeling that maybe they don't believe that's going to happen because of the past issues that they've had with Saint Martin's.
President Sanchez, Councilman Winter, thank you for the question, and it's a fair one. You know, I've been at Saint Martin's for just a little under two years, a year and a half. We have new leadership. Since I have been there, we have gone out of our way to reach out to not only our neighbors and the neighborhood associations, certainly since this project has come up into our scope of vision, but also our neighborhood fellow service providers. We do a lot more collaborating with the other service providers as well. So I think, I think to answer your question, what we're trying to do is really reframe moving forward. There has been a twenty-to-twenty-five-year story about Saint Martin's, and during that time period, as I mentioned before, the homeless population has grown significantly and in complexity. So we've been trying to keep up as an organization with the need. And, you know, these issues, you know, and obviously a lot of the public testimony tonight reflects this, you know, it's, this is a polarizing issue. It's complex and it's difficult. And we are absolutely committed, under my leadership, to work with the neighbors, to work with the city, to work with the county, to work with all the stakeholders involved to get this done, because at the end of the day, this is really about the people that are on the streets and housing them. And so as an organization, that's what we're committed to, is doing everything in our power to house people. This is a start, but I hope to be involved in many, many more conversations, whether it's revolving specifically around Saint Martin's operation of any further housing developments. But I want to be a part of the dialogue to continue Albuquerque moving forward into really significantly addressing the problem of homelessness, which can only be done through permanent supportive housing.
Thank you, Counselor Winter. Any other questions for the developers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will open the discussion to the council. Counselor Jones and then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all the discussion tonight. It's very interesting to hear how everyone feels about this. I've looked at this and I think it's probably a very good project, but unfortunately, and I know we're scrambling to not lose a federal money, however, sometimes we should step back, take a look at things and say, what is it really? I've not seen the RFP, I've not seen the response to the RFP, I've not seen anything about expenses. What are the services that are going to be provided? We kind of talked about that. What are they going to cost? What's it going to cost in total to build the project, to include the landscaping, the fencing, some of the things we've been talking about? This is, in my opinion, probably a very, very good idea. The devil is in the details. As Mr. Taylor said, we have no idea what this is going to cost. It's always the recurring expenses on this type of thing that kill us. Where's the money coming from? And we say, okay, well, there's going to be an agreement. Is that agreement for perpetuity? How do you keep one of the parties from saying, oops, we don't have that kind of tax money coming anymore? We can't support this. This is obviously one of those projects that has to be publicly supported. Private sector can't do it. But I am absolutely concerned that this is not ready for primetime. This is not ready for us to commit the city to this type of development and project until we have some answers out here. We have no idea what the specific projects are. I did talk to some of the team and the gentleman from Saint Martin's or Hope Works, and very, very interesting talking with him. No idea of costs, no idea of, just, it's a, it's a wonderful, I'm confident, good dream, but until I see what the RFP said, what the response said, any kind of a budget, who's going to take care of the capital expenses in ten years or less, when this property is in really bad shape? We're not talking about an easy project to maintain. Where's the money going to come from? Where's the utility costs coming? It's, I haven't, I think it's premature for us to try to vote on this and commit money from anyone without some answers to these questions, so I'm having a hard time with this. Thank you.
Counselor Davis. Again, please hold your applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counselor Jones, I share some of those concerns, and I want to have a chance to address a couple of them really quickly and ask for a little help from the administration. So I heard during our presentation, and I agree, the concerns about we don't yet have the MOU finalized with the county to decide sort of who builds it, who runs it, and how that works, but I heard that the CAO had executed that and sent it to the county. Mr. Real, can you give us an update? What's in the MOU exactly, and what is the city proposing, and what's the status of that MOU as regard to who does what at this site?
Mr. President and Counselor Davis, the MOU is with, obviously with Bernalillo County. Ms. Nayer signed the MOU last week. It's back with the county for their signature. It commits the county to two million dollars of funding to match the city's two million dollars that would ultimately be used to secure the funds from the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority. It also, in that MOU, contemplates the county of Bernalillo going out for vouchers that would be utilized to support the housing program. They have to go through an RFP process, and so their process is a little behind in terms of the project itself, but the county is putting up those dollars to make the project work. Ms. Pierce is here from the Family and Community Services Department, and she might be able to answer any more details you might have as it relates to the day-to-day operations, if you will.
She's shaking her head, so I think that means she doesn't want us to call her, but I'm welcome to, it'd be great. Mr. Real and Ms. Pierce, if I may, Mr. President, just to follow that, in terms of the MOU with the county, it sounds like that is mostly, thank you, Ms. Pierce, I'm welcome, it sounds like that's mostly as regard to this resolution, just to be sure that we execute and get the cost-sharing agreements for dollars for purchase. Where is the city, or how does the city contemplate operation of the facility will work? It's my understanding, we've had some conversations about that with the county, but where are we in those, and how does the city anticipate that'll happen? And maybe Ms. Pierce is the right person for that.
Well, Counselor Sanchez, President Sanchez and Counselor Davis, as we said, the county is committed to put out an RFP for the service provision, which will have the housing vouchers for those forty-two residents that will be in there. And that is the plan to really keep those services moving forward. With the behavioral health tax that the county has, that's where the service dollars will come to maintain those services from the county.
Mr. President, if I can follow Ms. Pierce, but.
Go ahead and proceed.
Are you aware, what the, are you aware about any conversation beyond housing vouchers? We've talked about single-site-supported housing, which implies sort of wraparound services that include behavioral health, usually food services, employment services, et cetera, as I understand from, and I asked the Saint Martin's folks to give me a nod if I'm wrong, the Hope Works team is telling us that they're going to operate this as an independent organization, it's not from their other services. Are you aware of conversations about who would provide those or how they would be funded?
I'm not aware, Counselor Davis, of those particular services, the housing vouchers from the county, is what I'm aware of.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I know Counselor Jones was a chip, I don't want to follow the one more, if I may, Mr. President, and then I'll defer to the council. Mr. Real, thank you, Ms. Pierce. Mr. Real, I noted, our staff noted in the write-up and working towards this, this project came to us in a little unique way, and it says in lieu, that this resolution came in lieu of an executive communication requesting approval here. Has the mayor's office or the administration taken a position, and if they are not inclined to issue an EC for approval, can you tell us why?
Mr. President and Counselor Davis, if you'll recall, the council during the course of the last three months, Counselor Benton had introduced a resolution on this project. We worked with the counselor because we were trying to come up with a resolution to, you know, to the issue of homelessness in the downtown area. The process was, if I'm not mistaken, sometime in May or April of this year, we, because of the council's not meeting in July, we opted to move forward with an RFP, and we moved forward with that in hopes of getting this process expedited, simply because of the timeline with the federal funds. You know, obviously, the homeless issue is a harsh reality that we face in our community. Like many other folks who have talked tonight, there's forty-two units that we don't have today. We know that from the work that we've done across reviewing everything from San Antonio to other parts of the country, that permanent supportive housing is the key to homelessness and to giving folks an opportunity. And so the administration is supportive of moving the needle on the issue. We know that there is a much bigger program that we are going to be working with all of you as it relates, as we go down the road, but at the end of the process, whether it's a campus of some sort or whatever we ultimately decide, we know that the housing piece is what moves the needle on homelessness, and this provides at least the beginning of that.
Thank you, Mr. Real, and, Mr. President, I appreciate that. I'd just like to reserve the opportunity to weigh in at the end as we hear more debate.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Real, I agree one hundred percent, housing is the answer to this, but it has to be smart housing. We have to use our money wisely, because it's going to be a very, very huge cost. So Director Pierce, I have a question. We're talking about, we're going to, we're going to use housing vouchers. Great. So the housing vouchers will help pay. How much do they pay per person?
President Sanchez and Counselor Jones, I'm not, I can't answer that question.
And where does that money come from?
The county gets housing dollars, that's, those are the dollars they are planning on putting into that RFP. And that may be, I can't answer that specifically. They have the behavioral health tax dollar to help provide services and housing for homeless individuals.
And I'm sorry to say this, but, I mean, again, this goes to, this is not a well-planned, well-thought-out project. And maybe we're better off to step back and say, okay, we might lose that federal money. But how can we commit to something like this when we have no idea how much money we're bringing in, how much money's going to go out? Because as I understand it, housing vouchers don't pay for the additional services. They provide walls and where they live. But now we're talking, we have to, we have so many professionals and so many people that we have to pay to be in there to provide the services that we need to provide, but we have no idea where the money's coming from, or how much it is. Maybe we can find out where it comes from, but we need to know how much it is. And I'm very reluctant to vote yes on something when there is no, no idea out there how this is going to be done, and no reflection on anybody here. I just think we're premature. Thank you.
Counselor Benton.
I think we need to answer those questions right now, Counselor Jones, because there, this has been planned out, and there is an idea. I guess we probably should ask the proponent to come down again to answer some of this, but, Counselor Jones, I know that you sit on the Behavioral Health Initiative, the ABCGC, where we are hearing the Behavioral Health Initiative, but the Behavioral Health Initiative has this as one of its key needs. And the top need, in fact, with the exception of the centralized triage center, which is much more big, expensive, and likely to be controversial where the location of that occurs. But with regard to the operation, primarily the operation is through these vouchers, which the county is in the business of issuing and does regularly, and so they've committed to do that. As far as the operation of the actual service itself, the supportive housing service, we can ask the proponent, but as far as buildings being ten years in bad shape, if I'm not mistaken, two hundred, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor Jones, that two hundred LOMAS has been in place for over ten years, and it's a solid building, and it looks as good as the day it was built, and it's been very well-maintained and professionally managed for those ten-plus years, as far as I know. And we have precedent for how this is going to work. The eight point nine million is leveraging more, I believe they're going to be going for a low-income housing tax credit, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, no, this project doesn't have any low-income housing tax credits in it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, so, but the entire project will be built for eight point nine million?
Yeah. Mr. President, Counselor Benton, we are anticipating that the entire project from site acquisition to construction would be built for just a little over nine million dollars.
Okay. So there you have some additional smaller funds?
Yes, private funds.
All right. And, but the level of quality and the level of design and durability and so forth is going to be on par with modern housing?
Yes, sir. We were just in Denver a couple weeks ago, saw the latest and greatest single-site project that's been built around the country. It was built with trauma-informed design. The building itself is five-star, it's incredible. Those are the standards that we're looking at building. We want to build not just a housing project, but a housing project that Albuquerque can be proud of, that Wells Park can be proud of. It's going to be a beautiful building.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Counselor Borigal.
You might need to shut me up at some point in time, Counselor.
There is a ten-minute time rule. So go ahead and proceed.
Well, I think everyone is here tonight with no ill will toward the homeless, and I certainly appreciate that, and I appreciate the providers that have spoken tonight, because you guys have all been in this business for many, many years. And I think that, you know, we are being a little short-sighted when we say we're going to build a campus ten miles out, and it's going to have a college campus, and they're going to be, what about, where are they going to go from there? And maybe we're working sort of backwards a little bit? We're providing the housing, and then we're going to go build the campus? I don't know. I mean, I don't have the answer. I have worked with the homeless for at least fifteen years of my career, because I worked in the downtown neighborhoods. And I remember when, probably ten to twelve years ago, when we talked about putting all of the services under one building, and I think that was under Mayor Chavez, and then that got shot down, and we had a site on second by the railroad tracks in Borellos. And the community said, no, no, not in my backyard. Everybody wants a solution, but nobody wants it in their backyard. And by the way, sir, I've lived all over the city. I've lived in the University Area International District, I've lived on the west side, southwest side, northwest side, northeast heights. Kind of sound like a traveling salesman, but, you know, it's an issue of the haves and the have-nots. And our society has sort of come to this point where, you know, the haves are people who go home every night, and they're perfectly comfortable, and they don't have to look out the window and see the people walking by. And I appreciate the business people who have had to deal with the situations of people, you know, urinating in their front yards or sleeping in their front yards, but at some point, we have to start talking about who the homeless really are. You know, the homeless are our brothers and sisters, they're our cousins, they're our family, they're our friends, they're people who have come down on their luck. They're Native Americans that travel back and forth to the pueblos, they're the mentally ill, and we deregulated the mentally, the mental institutions a few years back, and now we have this situation. We have the alcoholics, we have the drug addicts, you know, we have, there are all sorts, and we have the criminals who are feeding off of these people, unfortunately. You know, there's not a golden egg out there for all of us, and many, many of us have traveled all over the country, and I don't know about you guys, but I haven't seen a really clear city that is dealing with this problem very well. Los Angeles is in dire straits. I did work on second a LOMAS, Counselor Benton. As a matter of fact, I was the redevelopment official for the city at the time when we built that. And it has operated in a very positive way. It is transitional housing. That is what it is. And I think this particular proposal is transitional housing. And I think this particular proposal is transitional housing. Right now, we don't have a hundred million dollars to create a campus and to create all these wonderful services. We have eight million dollars. And either we use it or we lose it. I mean, that's kind of where we're at right now. We use it or we lose it. Because we, the city council does not have the authority to take eight million dollars and do something else with it. It's here now. I mean, this is what we're dealing with. We're dealing with this issue today. And so I, you know, I don't know. I think we, as a community, we need to raise the bar and start really talking about networking services, seriously, networking services, veteran services, Native American outreach services. I mean, dealing with these issues of who these, who this population is, but also talking about, once we get those individuals in the services, start transitioning them into being more stable and living in a stable environment so that they can move on and get a job and start dealing with their families. So, you know, I, right now, the problem is on Second. It's on Wells Park. It's in Borellos. It's in my neighborhood. Yeah, it's in, it's way out on the northwest mesa. You know, we had, two weeks ago, a group that decided to, I guess, they just located on somebody's land, you know? And we have them in the Arroyos. We're moving them out of the Arroyos on a daily basis. So, you know, unless we're really wanting to get serious as a community and start talking about what are the, what are the needs? The needs are to network the services. And I don't have all the answers, but I have some of the answers because I did work with these issues a little bit. And we did this in our sector plans when we wrote Borellos, Martinez Town, South Broadway, University, International District. We had a section in those sector plans that dealt with this and that put money toward that. And then, you know, those things went away. So remember, we're not building prisons. We're not saying, you go into this place and don't ever come out, you know? And we don't want to see you. We're saying, let's create some kind of a transitional housing that will deal with these network of services that will actually help create healthy individuals. And really, that's kind of, you know, I give you credit, Counselor Benton, for taking this head-on. I know it's difficult. And, you know, the only way that we're all going to win is if we're in this together. And, you know, is this the answer? Probably it's only the very, very tip of the iceberg. So let's raise the bar a little bit.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Counselor Davis?
I appreciate it, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge, it sounds like we're getting close to a vote, and I think we've, this is important, I think, I have to say, I agree, Counselor, and you and I have talked about this a lot. I appreciate it very much. Single-site housing, supportive housing, is absolutely the answer for this challenge. Our friends from St. Martin's talked about going to Denver to visit their single site. You'll see that their city council, a couple years ago, passed legislation banning camping, right? Trying to criminalize homelessness. People aren't criminals, and homeless people aren't criminals. They did that to drive people into some of these new facilities. And in spite of all that, there are places where single-site is showing it really works and because they're supported. My challenge is not that. I actually think, long-term, a year from now, this will be the site that we do this because there are so many services there. And what I heard from the Wels Park president was, they support housing first and support the organizations that are trying to help. But my own experience has been that St. Martin's has not yet been able to live up to the good neighbor agreements they've made with the neighborhood so far. And homelessness is not a challenge just for Wells Park. As Counselor Borrego said, it's everybody's challenge right now. I think that is all the better reason we have to get this first one right because that neighborhood is counting on us to do it well. Others are, I'm not as skeptical that pushing this off, we certainly will lose MFA dollars. But if we have a good project and a good plan that can show and be a model, I think it will expedite our work in the future and applications for other dollars. And so I'm having a hard time, but I have to, I have to rely on my own experience and experience of my friends and coworkers who have businesses there that have had a really hard time. And I think this is an important step, but I don't think it's the right one yet with the right partners. But I think St. Martin's is the right partner. You know how to do this better than anybody else knows how to do it. And before we add a new thing to it, I think we ought to add a new skill set to the folks that are doing the work to help them mediate these neighborhood issues and address them in a positive way. And so for that reason, I think I would prefer that everything be better. I think we'd rather see a plan first and show that we knew the MOU and what the provider to resident proportions would be for the types of services. I realize because of the timeline, it's not there, but build it first has not been a good model for our city lately, and I don't think we ought to impose that on another neighborhood until we figure out a better process. And so I want to figure out and work together to figure out how we do that and whether the city can reserve our own dollars as an incentive for this project down the road or in other ways. But I don't, I'm not ready yet to say that we're there.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a project that's been in the planning stage for well over a year. To say that there's no plan for it, I really think does it injustice and frankly, I think it insults a lot of the players who put so much work into it. So are all the pieces together? Maybe not, but we're getting close to it. I think the critical pieces are there. I think the fact that this is a partnership on multiple levels, first of all, the, you know, the funding and execution of this project with the, not only St. Martin's, but the county and the city. By the way, Counselor Borrego said something about our eight million dollars, ours, just two million of it, that's the county's portion. Okay. And then, right, and then the MFA. So it is a partnership on that level, but, because I think of the dialogue that's been going on just recently, now we have another commitment, as written in Counselor Benton's floor amendment, to develop a good plan of action to protect the neighborhood there, to clean it up. And I think there's many things that all of us can do, the city, the county, Wells Park Neighborhood Association, definitely, and St. Martin's. You know, the people who live and do business along that, along Second Street and in that neighborhood, you know, they deserve the respect that I think they've been sort of marginalized lately. So I'm certainly, it's not my district, but you know what? I kind of feel a, you know, like an ownership, so to speak, of it anyway, because it does house and serve so many of the city's homelessness. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. I'd like to make a couple of comments before Counselor Benton closes. Let me first begin by saying, I know by no means that this project is perfect. No project is perfect. But we are going to help forty-two individuals, women, children, veterans, and individuals dealing with mental illness, which will be a benefit to the entire city. Residents throughout Albuquerque are crying out to their elected leaders to make decisions that will help with this crisis that we are dealing with, which is homelessness. I know the Haven for Hope in San Antonio is a wonderful project, but we all heard the cost of that project was over one hundred million dollars. Here we have eight million dollars to start a project which will benefit forty-two individuals and a lot more than that because they're not going to be there, hopefully, for a long period of time. This will be transitional housing for these individuals. But I feel we have an opportunity and we have an obligation to the residents of our community. And I'm also empathetic to the businesses along that corridor because you are currently dealing with this problem on a daily basis. I solicit and go to Garcia's Kitchen often at Forest Street and Mountain Road, and they do a wonderful job. And I know it's, I know it's been a challenge for Mr. Garcia, and they have lost some business. But I truly believe with the partners that are involved, the city, the county, MFA, Yes Housing, Hope Works, that we will build a project that the entire city will be proud of. And hopefully, those forty-two individuals that have caused chaos and problems for these businesses will be off the streets and hopefully, we can address the bigger problem down the road. I know that, I believe Mayor Keller supports the project that they have in San Antonio. The Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce supports that initiative. And I think that's the type of project that we need to look at in the future. But right now, we do not have one hundred million dollars to build that project. And hopefully, through, you know, donations and volunteer work, we can get there in the future. But we now have over nine million dollars to build this project, which will benefit many of the homeless residents in our community. And I will support this legislation. Counselor Benton to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for everyone who came down to speak and for having a civil dialogue. Yeah, you know, we're hearing, we heard people say, we need more time in order to have the best possible project. Without question, we need more time and more effort to get where we need to go. But we do have a roadmap before us with the Behavioral Health Initiative work. And again, this was a top priority, this type of project. And no one's saying this would be the only project. In fact, given the population, you know, eventually, there should be more of these projects, a couple more at least. But what this project is intended to do is to, is to, and will only serve the most severely threatened people within the homeless community. So they're trying to get them stabilized and then moved on to a group home or a more average kind of housing situation where they can access services and continue to develop as a citizen with the, with help of social services, but without needing them right on site with them. So I have to say that when I first came on the council, I saw a lot of good people working on the homeless issue, but I did not see them working together very well. I really see that today. I really see that today. And this is the first time the county and the city are together as a partner on this. So as was pointed out, two million of City of Albuquerque money, that's what we're talking about here ourselves right now today, leveraging six point nine million dollars to get this project built between our partners at the county and the, and the MFA. But, Mr. Real?
Mr. President, counselors, my apologies to you. I was looking through the MOU, and I want to make sure that you all have this information before you make your vote. The MOU with the county of Bernalillo includes, as I said earlier, a two-million-dollar matching, if you will, funds for the capital for the actual construction of the facility. But it also has a one million dollars of supportive services inclusive of housing vouchers for the term of the agreement. So not only is the county putting in two million for the construction, but also allocating a million dollars for the supportive services at the facility. This is part of the MOU agreement, and I apologize to you all for not raising it earlier, but I wanted to make sure you all knew that that's part of the agreement that's being, that was executed, or at least that has been signed by the CIO and is being sent to the county for their approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Real, for clarifying that. And, yeah, these are funds that, these are the type of funds that we and the county are already spending. So this isn't some issue of the money's not going to be there. These are funds that we're already spending less effectively on other housing options. Instead, we are, we'll be directing those that we and the county, we shouldn't say it, you know, going forward, that forever, we won't have to pay anything. But as a community, we are already paying for these, and we're furthermore, of course, paying in spades and beyond the pale for jail and police services and emergency room services. But, so anyway, thanks for that clarification. But, but, but we are pulling together now, and I think that's really important to note. And we've got to start somewhere, as was said, we've got to move the needle. We've got to start somewhere. And this is not to say that every housing of this type that will be built in Wells Park to the contrary. This is a place where there's an opportunity right now and a developer right now. By the way, no, St. Martin's doesn't have experience running something like this, nor does anyone else here in town. And nobody else came forward with this project. They did. They went out and beat the bushes and got this grant from MFA. Hallelujah. And we ought to be supporting them in that. So we're all going to be learning throughout this process, whether it's this project or something else. We are continuing, hopefully, learning throughout this project. But there's no expert that's going to come in and run this any better than St. Martin's is. And again, they're going to have professional management of the facility, and then, of course, we'll be providing the types of services to individuals that they already provide. There's nothing to prevent them from doing that. The whole issue of crime associated with the homeless population, every police officer I've spoken to has said, you've got to separate the sheep from the wolves. The vast majority of these people are decent, law-abiding people who are challenged with various behavioral issues. But APD can't do its job. It was mentioned about the Department of Justice settlement and the fact that we have this AMRAC and this committee that they are very focused on, the DOJ and the folks who are monitoring our police reform efforts and the police themselves, who I think are doing a great job and really are on the front lines and dealing with these issues, would be very happy to say, we're going to house forty-two, going to be forty-two less people out there amongst some of the population that's out there taking advantage of them. There was some, a statement, I'm going through some of the comments, there was a statement about proof of actual outcomes. Well, this model of supportive housing has proven outcomes throughout the country where it's been built. People are in place where you can check in with them every day. They're not being jailed in a building, and north should they be in a jail unless it's completely, completely torn apart and rebuilt. But they're in a place where they have security and they have some hope, the providers have some hope of being able to get a hold of them when they need to. Right now, the providers are chasing people around town who are living willy-nilly here and there in Section Eight rental housing, and in some cases, because of their disability, are creating a nuisance for their neighbors in those facilities. So the proof of actual outcomes is there. Addressing the community concerns, we've talked about that. Are we late in addressing this community's concerns? Yes. But this has actually opened up a door for us to talk about those concerns that didn't exist before. And I just want to say, no knock on anybody, but I hadn't heard a whole lot of concerns from the immediate neighbors until just recently about this project. Now, there was, there was people talking about downtown and how this affects downtown. We meet with a downtown group about homelessness and about crime on a regular basis. There's Alvarado Transportation Center Task Force, deals with the issues around the transportation center, which every city that has a public transportation center has issues with the homeless and this kind of activity and people coming and going because that's their only form of transportation. But that is also a very concerted effort to take care of downtown, and this will be coordinated with that. And we're adding more police presence downtown, and we have people out doing what's called Albuquerque Street Connect, various outreach to the people who will not be in this residential facility. So it's such a massive issue that when we talk about one project like this, I understand why people get concerned, and I understand why people say this isn't the only solution because it's not. But it's part of the solution and a proven part of the solution. because it's not. But it, it's part of the solution and a proven part of the solution. So, councilors, I, I implore you to support this, moving forward on this. We do still have the development agreement where we can answer some of the questions about details of, of operation and so forth. And if this council decides that, that it's not fully baked, then we can, we can stop it right there. I hope we don't. But, but right now, I don't think we ought to be turning down four point nine million of matching funds to get this project built.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. I know that was your closing statements, but I'm going to open it up for one more question. Councilor Jones, regarding the comment by Mr. Ral.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Ral, you said, "Thank you for the information from the MOU that says the county will be providing one million dollars for..."
Mr. President and Councilor Jones, the, the MOU states that the county will provide up to one million dollars for supportive services at the facility, inclusive of housing vouchers for the term of this agreement.
Okay, and that is one million, and, and you're saying inclusive of vouchers. So, that isn't necessarily one million for services. But the real question is, for the term of this agreement, does that mean it's one million annually or one million for the term of this agreement?
It says one million for the term of this agreement, inclusive of housing vouchers. It's my understanding that the, the term is a thirty-year term in terms of the, the agreement. It says, "The agreement shall commence the effective date and shall expire at least the last day of the affordability period in the development agreement for the facility, parentheses, thirty years from the date of the initial occupancy." So, that's what we understand is the, is the agreement from the county.
If I may, Mr. City Attorney, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, but I would be able to pick that one apart if it says for the term of, as opposed to annually for the term of.
We are. We're, we're working closely with the county on this, President Sanchez, Councilor Jones. We are working very closely with the county on this. And so, we're on top of all that.
Thank you. And if I may, Mr. President, and that's it?
Go on, proceed.
This is one of the reasons we're not ready to sign this agreement. I mean, we don't really know what is paying when, how long. And I'm not sure that the county does in fact have the right to commit, if it's annually, for something annually for thirty years. That, that seems, I, I don't know whether they can or not, but it seems rather generous. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. Do you have a couple more comments regarding the comments of Councilor Jones?
I'll keep it brief, please. Well, since it was raised, I, I saw Mr. Morris come down. I didn't want to, I just didn't want to preclude him being able to answer that since we're opening it up again for questions.
Yes, Mr. Sanchez, Councilor Benton, Councilor Jones. I did want to let the council members know that the, the anticipated voucher income for this project would be approximately three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year, just the voucher income.
And could I, if I could? And with regard to the services that are being provided in, for this building, if you will, aren't these services that are being provided elsewhere and around the city already? We have, or am I mistaken?
Yeah. Mr. President, Councilor Benton, so we, we do collaborate on a lot of services. However, this project will be specific to our organization's management and services. So, that is why the, the county services piece is appropriate because in addition to the vouchers, there will need to be money to help provide, for example, twenty-four-seven security, twenty-four-seven case management onsite. So, there, we have, we have proposed a budget to the county when they are ready to receive, whenever they're ready to put out their RFP for services, and we will respond to it.
All right, thank you. And again, there are more and more, thank goodness, there are more and more people being trained in these kind of services as well. And we're not going to get out of it. We're going to be paying for these services, we and/or the county, and most of us, we as city taxpayers or county taxpayers, for a long time to come. No doubt about it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of R-59 as amended. Those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no, and raise your hand. That carries on a five to three vote. Thank you. We will be taking a dinner break and return in approximately thirty minutes.